2018 is now in session. If everyone would please stand for the pledge of allegiance, followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, thank you for the many blessings we enjoy. We continue to pray for those suffering across our nation. Bless the efforts of all providing aid to those in need of food, clothing, and shelter. Continue to keep our community safe and guard those who protect us. Direct us with dedication and commitment as we consider the matters before us. In your holy name, amen.
Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Here.
Spatelli.
Here.
Kowinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Rakels.
Here.
Vanez.
Here. Let the record reflect nine present, zero absent. Moving on to reading of the minutes.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Spatelli.
Take the most accepted minutes from October 1st, 2018, and to be placed on file.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilman Emerson, to approve the minutes of October 1st. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to approval of claims.
Madam Chair President.
Yes, Councilman.
Move for approval of claims, September 26th through October 10th, for council meeting October 15th, 2018. Beginning with claims dated 10/2/18 and ending with claims dated 10/10/18. Claim number 5823 through claim number 6202 for a total of $16,597,610.77. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs, for approval of claims from October 2nd through October 15th. Any discussion?
Madam Chair Lady.
Yes, Councilman.
Couple additions. Claim number 6203, $69.54, Councilman Higgs for, they had a senior citizens meeting in Bingo. Claim number 6204, $88.20, Councilman Higgs. Veggie trays and fruit bowl for the same thing. Claim number 6205, Councilman Higgs, $7.96 water for that occasion, two cases. 6206, Nike Albert leasing, $97,395.14. That's the leasing agreement that we have for replacement of police vehicles and so forth, other utility vehicles. Claim number 6207, St. Casimir's School, $150 for Councilman Kowinski for St. Casimir's trunk or treat. I so move.
Councilman, claim number 6207 is $97,395...
6206, $97,395.14.
Alrighty, thank you. Motion by Councilman Markovich. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Warple for approval of amended claims, number 6203, in the amount of $69.54. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. 6204, $88.20. 6205, $7.96. Claim number 6207, in the amount of $150. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
I was interested in finding out what the claim for $58.74 for the Minister Alliance... Someone can answer that question?
How much is for?
$5,000.
That's for the parade. We help support the Minister Alliance for the parade for Martin Luther King event that we have at the Civic Center. Yep. It's a recurring. We've been doing that for years. It helps offset the expenses of the event.
Any discussion on the amendments? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Claims pass, nine in favor, zero opposed. Now four claims as written. Clerk Golick.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. What was Councilman Higgs?
I was distracted. Yes, that's a yes vote.
Alrighty, thank you. Claims pass, nine in favor, zero opposed. Moving on to public hearings, there are none. Communications.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
The meeting, last meeting, it was, I was approached by one of the audience in regards to grandstanding. I wanted to make it perfectly clear this, I don't have no need to grandstand for no reason whatsoever. I do my job 365 days a year, not just at election time. So for whatever district you represent, or wherever you live, which I don't know, I would concentrate on that councilman to make sure that they're doing it. Point of order.
Order, order, order. You'll be able to voice your opinion during public expression. Thank you.
So that's basically what I wanted to say, so that that's out there, so there's no misconstrue.
Thank you.
Point of order. Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
When there's a point of order that's called, the audience is not allowed to respond to me or none of my colleagues. So I would appreciate if you would explain that to that gentleman. If he wants to speak under public expression, he is more than welcome to do so. Criticism, I have no problem with, but racism, I do.
Councilman, George, during public expression, please. And Councilman, I did address that before. So your point is not well taken.
Madam President.
Any other communications?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
You didn't. You allowed him to physically, emotionally abuse me at the last meeting and did not correct him when he was wrong, holling in the audience. It's totally disrespectful, not just to me, to all my colleagues. It's not professional. And I don't have, if he wants to talk to me, he's more than welcome to do it outside the meeting or at the meeting. Feel free.
Thank you for your opinion, Councilman. Any other communications?
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Torres.
I have two letters from Hammond Elderly Senior Citizens Home, 5111 Soul Avenue. They're asking for donations for the Thanksgiving dinner that they have, and also for the Christmas holiday celebration, December 21st, and Thanksgiving is November 21st. Appreciate if the council donates generously. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other communications?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
I did receive a correspondence from Dean Button, who's the city engineer. Says, "Councilman Higgs, dear, Councilman Higgs, in response to your letter, we received, we will add 6100 Block of Marshall and the 1000 Block of Cleveland to the list of light designs. The overlay at the 700 Block of Soul," which was spelled incorrectly somehow or another, it's S-H-O-L, not S-O-U-L, "is not clear on the location. Could you please clarify the location? The 8900 Block of May Street, the alley, was inspected and found that the alley is not needed. Please let us know if further action is required." Well, the 800 Block, I feel is needed, but we can discuss that as well. The list of sidewalks being repaired in the 3rd District is attached. 5947 Holman Avenue and 246 Waltham was inspected and is on the sidewalk list of repairs. Thank you so much, Mr. Button, for your correspondence, and I will discuss further issues with you in regards to my district. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other communications?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
On tomorrow, there will be a ribbon cutting on the groundbreaking for the new Hammond High School. It's Tuesday, October 16th, 2018, at 4:00 p.m. All are welcome.
Thank you. Any other communications? Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications are now closed. Moving on to committee reports.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
Council as a whole will be bringing out, and Finance Committee will be bringing out, 1819, 1820, 1821, 1822, and 1823.
Thank you. And as usual, I will read off the list of upcoming community and crime watch meetings. On Tuesday, October 16th, the East Hammond-Poleman Crime Watch will meet at the Ophelia Steen Center at 6:30 p.m. On Thursday, October 18th, the Hessville Crime Watch will meet at the Jean Shepherd Center at 7:00 p.m. On Friday, November 2nd, Irving Community Watch will meet at Irving School at 9:15 a.m. Wednesday, October 17th, Lafayette Neighborhood Watch will meet at Lafayette School at 6:30 p.m. Tuesday, October 30th, Pulaski Park Neighborhood Association will meet at the American Legion on Goslin, that is at 6:30 p.m. And the South Hammond Crime Watch will meet on Thursday, October 18th, at the Hammond Housing Authority Building, beginning at 7:00 p.m. I also wanted to announce that Edison Community Watch and the Eastside Community Council, in partnership with Home Depot, will again be hosting our 7th Annual Citywide Trunk or Treat. That is Saturday, October 27th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at Home Depot. Dress the children, bring them out, and they can trunk or treat from each trunk to trunk to trunk. And if any organization is interested in participating, you can contact either me, and my information is on the city website, or Leroy Howard Jr. with the Eastside Community Council. It's always a fun evening. And that's because community is not just about me, it's about us. Committee reports is now closed. Moving on to ordinance, third and final passage.
Ordinance 18-19, the City of Hammond, 2019 budget proposal.
Madam President.
Councilman Warple.
I move for final passage and adoption of 1819.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Higgs, for final passage of 1819. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
If I could have Heather approach the podium and give us an explanation to any additional changes to this budget from last year.
Good evening, council. As we discussed at a few of our budget hearings this session, there was just a few minor changes from last year's budget. The general fund increased less than 1%. That total budget is about $68.5 million. That includes a 2% increase in salaries for all employees. Our largest expenses continue to be college bound at $4.6 million, insurance costs at $12.2 million, and public safety, which includes $40.5 million on the general fund and $55.5 million on all public safety funds. That's broken down by about $33 million as police expenses and about $23 million in fire expenses. So as we saw through the budget hearings, the different graphs and charts we talked about, we've tried to cut where we can in our supplies and services line items. We really are pretty lean there, and the bulk of it that's left is personnel expenses. So we see the majority of those personnel expenses going to our larger departments, public safety, and then public works. We were able to shift some expenses to our lit and ceded funds to cover the cost of insurance and utilities. Our gaming budget, there was a change there. We have held the $12.5 million transfer to the general fund to help with that shortfall there. All districts will be receiving $1.75 million. The shared 10% will receive $1 million, and Mayor's Gaming will receive $4.25 million. The shared 10% funds are used for citywide matching projects for the engineering department that we typically would do grants for. We did receive a special lowit distribution a couple of years ago, so we've carried that forward and felt that we were able to reduce the 10% to allow for a little bit more money to be distributed amongst the districts and the Mayor's Gaming. Our revenue, our major sources of revenue continue to be property taxes, though we take a large hit there. We probably will only collect about $32 to $33 million, and that's assuming a 92% collection rate, which is net of the circuit breaker. Our entire levy, our max levy, is at $47 million. We lose about 11 of that to the circuit breaker. So we're losing, you know, excuse me, our entire levy, once we, when we reduce the circuit breaker amount there, we're only collecting at that 92% rate. So when we're talking about $11 million loss to the circuit breaker credits, you know, you can see pretty easily where we need that $12.5 million transfer from the gaming to make our budget work. We still will collect about $35 million, possibly a little bit more in the gaming funds. Your budget reflects that. And that's from pure gaming dollars from development agreements, as well as the taxes generated by the admissions tax and wagering tax on the gaming sales. We also will collect about $8 million in water sales. Debt, we have not retired any debt this year, but we'll be retiring the judgment bonds, 2008 judgment bonds, next year. And we did add the park bond debt onto this year's budget, which will account for some of the increase that you see in the overall budget itself. And that is going to go towards those four district pools that will be redone, and we'll hopefully see some of those opening next year. Any other questions from the council?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
Again, Heather, I want to applaud your efforts, and I can identify people within the administration that are really doing a wonderful job, and you are one of them. And I acknowledge your responsibility and what it takes as an accountant, because I have one in my family as well, but certainly, I really appreciate your knowledge.
Thank you. I appreciate it, Councilman. Any other questions?
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote on 1819, please.
Markovich. Spatelli.
Yes.
Kowinski.
No.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Councilman Markovich is back on the floor, and your vote, sir?
Yes.
So we have eight in favor, one opposed, zero absent. Moving on to 1820.
Ordinance 1820, the 2019 budget proposal for the sanitary district of Hammond Sewer Maintenance Fund 608, Special Sanitary Debt Service Exempt Fund 308, and Special Sanitary Debt Service Fund 309, sponsored by Councilwoman Vanez and Councilman Markovich and Spatelli.
Councilman Markovich.
Move for final passes and adoption.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Spatelli, for final passage of 1820. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
Marty, if you could step to the podium and explain if there are any additional costs that will occur in 2019, I would appreciate it.
Council members, I'm going to let Rachel go through that and answer those questions for you, Councilman. There really isn't a whole lot of change. Our budget for the sewer department is pretty consistent, and she'll talk a little bit about debt service.
Hello. So in the sewer maintenance budget, the largest increase was in repairs and maintenance, as we went over in the budget workshop that we had. We had money, we're going to have money left over from 2018, so we're able to now fund a lot of our repairs from this fund. The other increase is another lease purchase. We're going to replace one more vector, and we are also going to replace a service truck that is over 20 years old. Other than that, salaries is 2% raise on the sewer maintenance. The debt fund, the non-exempt, there was an increase due to the bond series 2015, and that bond has an adjustable rate, and we also issued a bond 2018C for a headworks project that will also increase that budget. Our exempt fund had an increase due to refunding bond series 2018. The payments are higher in the beginning years, and the interest decreases as a bond grows older, and bond interest reduced on some of the older bonds. So there was actually a decrease in that budget.
One thing I just want to remind the council on is that the sewer maintenance budget, about $4 million disappears with the caps next year. So in 2020, that is gone. So I'm working with staff, I'm working with Heather, working with the mayor, coming up with some different plans. Obviously, the city cannot run without a sewer department. It would be detrimental. It just wouldn't make any sense. So what I'm trying to do is to come up with replacing $4 million that gets lost with that tax cap. Just wanted to remind you, because I'll be coming back to talk to you about what we believe the best plan is to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
One way it probably will be to increase fees, just a suggestion, food for thought. Being a councilman for so many years, I'm knowledgeable, so, thanks.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote on 1820.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. 1820 passes, nine in favor, zero opposed. Moving on to 1821.
The 2019 budget proposal for the Hammond redevelopment, sponsored by Councilmen Spatelli and Rakels.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Spatelli.
Final passage and adoption of 1821.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilman Rakels, for final passage of 1821. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please, on 1821.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. 1821 passes, nine in favor, zero opposed. Moving on to 1822.
Ordinance number 18-22, and ordinance fixing the salaries and wages of all city officials and employees of the City of Hammond, other than those fixed by statute or by ordinance heretofore enacted, and fixing the effective date thereof.
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
I move for final passage of 18-22. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Spatelli, for final passage of 1822. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. 1822 passes, nine in favor, zero opposed. Moving on to 1823.
And ordinance fixing the salaries and wages of all policemen and firemen of the City of Hammond, Indiana, other than those that are fixed by statute or by ordinance heretofore enacted, and fixing the effective date thereof.
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
I move for final passage of 18-23. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Spatelli, for final passage of 1823. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. 1823 passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Vanez, that concludes the reading of the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Introduction of ordinances is next, and there are none, resolutions.
Item A, Resolution 18R-37, sponsored by Councilman Rakels. A resolution authorizing the Hammond Fire Department to apply for assistance to the firefighter grant.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Rakels.
Move passage of 18R-37.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Rakels, second by Councilman Warple, for final passage of 18R-37. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor of that particular resolution.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Rakels.
This is a grant, assistance to firefighter grant through FEMA. It's to purchase 12 thermal imaging cameras for fire apparatus, and it's due to safety issues and wear and tear on equipment. And it would cover 90% of the new cameras, and the city's share would be 10%.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. 18R-37 passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Vanez, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Now on finished business.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
We need to reschedule some meetings, and we've already rescheduled them once. But the meeting on November 12th is going to be moved, I propose to, to November 5th, and the meeting on November 26th be moved to November 19th.
20th.
20th, 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 I'm sorry.
Which is a Tuesday.
Which is a Tuesday. And also in December, the meeting scheduled for the twenty-fourth be moved to December seventeenth.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Rakels, to move the November twelfth meeting to November fifth, the November twenty-sixth meeting to Tuesday, November twentieth, the December twenty-fourth meeting to December seventeenth. So just for clarity, our meetings in November and December will be eleven five, eleven twenty, twelve ten, and twelve seventeen. All righty, motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Rakels, to change the meetings. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
I just wanted to personally thank Mark for meeting with me in the proposed design of the Martin Luther King Park. We had an opportunity to meet last week at seven AM, early in the morning, to just go over some general plans. So I just want to thank him for taking his time out to schedule that and meet with me.
Is that in reference to Mark Heinz with Parks?
Superintendent of Parks, that's who takes cares of all the parks in the City of Hammond. I'm sure you're aware of that.
You just didn't state his last name.
Oh.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Torres.
I need a letter sent to code enforcement regarding weeds that the Norfolk Railroad by the Soul Avenue and Calumet Avenue, weeds on both sides, extremely high, over four feet.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Torres, second by Councilman Higgs, to have a letter sent to code enforcement regarding the weeds along the Norfolk Railroad, along Soul and Calumet. Correct?
Yeah, between Soul and Calumet.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
The street is actually Fayette, it's in the second district, not the third. So it's from Calumet to Soul, and it's on Fayette, where the weeds are extremely high and been high for quite some time. That's in the second district of the City of Hammond.
So what are the streets again?
I just explained that.
I understand.
Soul Avenue and Calumet Avenue.
Soul, but is, but...
The street is Fayette from Calumet to Soul. Again, Fayette from Calumet to Soul.
All righty. So, motion by Councilman Torres, that was a second by Councilman Higgs', that was that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. To have a letter sent to code enforcement regarding the weeds on Fayette between Calumet and Soul, along the Norfolk. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Torres.
I also need a letter sent to our street lighting department, and also to NIPSCO in regards to NIPSCO poles on the West Alley of fifty-two hundred block of Ann Street. Pole number seventy-four over three eighty-two. That's the south end, does not have a light. Pole number eight four four over fifty-four is burned out. If we can get those replaced, we put in orders in May. No response from NIPSCO. See if we can get a response this time.
Second.
And the first pole number was seventy-four over three eighty-two?
Seventy-four over three eighty-two.
And there is no light, or it's burned out?
There is no light at the end of the alley, south end.
Okay, so you're looking to have a light installed. All righty, excuse me, motion by Councilman Torres, second by Councilman Higgs, to send a letter to the street depart, uh, street light department in NIPSCO regarding the fifty-two hundred block of Ann in the alley.
West Alley.
Yeah, West Alley. There is no light on the pole, number seventy-four over three eighty-two, and the light is burnt out on the pole, eight forty-four over fifty-four. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
Also, I submitted a letter to Mark in regards to some trees, so hopefully, I approved and signed off on the letter to give him some additional funding to get the dead trees within my district. So hopefully, we'll get them down shortly, and he has that list, and I would appreciate if he can get them torn down as quickly as possible. Some of them I've been looking at for about two years and just sitting there, so hopefully, I can get them down, and I've been requesting them to get them down for quite some time.
Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Hi, a lot of the complaints and letters that I hear coming from the council, you know, could go a lot quicker if you go right through the Hammond three one one app. It literally would happen the next day. Like, Councilman, if you pull up to a light that's burned out, take a picture of it on your smartphone, or just type in the pole number, it goes right to the department, instead of waiting two weeks until the next council meeting and having your secretary type out a letter and then send the letter to the department. That process could take a couple weeks. You could do it, and it'll be done the next day. Councilman Higgs, same thing. I suggest you use Hammond three one one. It's a lot faster, gets you to the front of the line. A lot of these complaints that you guys are writing letters over can be handled right on your smartphone, and I know you guys have smartphones. I just want to point that out, because we constantly tell the public that we want them to use this, it's more efficient. I think the council should lead by example and do it themselves also. That's my two cents.
Madam President.
There is also an area on NIPSCO's website that you can report, and, and outline.
Yes, ma'am. You could report, you could do crime tips, you could do all kinds of stuff on Hammond three one one, and we have thousands and thousands of people using it every year, and then there's still members of the Hammond Council that want to send a letter, like it's nineteen seventy-two. I mean, we have technology that gets you to the front of the line, and you're a council person.